We're going to bring to order the meeting of January 2nd. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have a couple of minutes. Do we want to make -- do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Of 11:26, 12:03, 12:10, 12:17, and Executive Session 12:03. Motion made and seconded. Anything else? All in favor? The acceptance letter of the resignation of our firing EMS chief, Zbikowski. Did I slander it?
No, you didn't.
Oh, good. Chief, the chief will be through the last day of February or March 1st? March 1st. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to accept the letter.
Seconded.
Okay, is there anything else to be said?
Just thank you so much for everything that you've done in the last several years.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, yeah. Ditto.
Thanks for putting up with me. It's not, it's not over yet.
There's still more to go.
That's right, it's not over yet. Just saying.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do number six? Trish Kunkanen?
Yep, we can.
Motion to approve Trish Kunkanen for the annual town report committee.
Seconded.
Anything else to be said?
Nope, she'll be awesome.
Thank you, Trish, for helping, helping out.
Yeah, you're welcome. You can thank me after.
Well, you mean after the vote?
Wait a minute, let me sign it, this way we lock her in.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I've told her we need a Nager in chief.
Let's see if I can find it here. There it is. For you to sign.
You could probably just hand it to her and save postage.
But you need a copy.
Keep a copy of it. The town clerk and the town.
I'm going to sign this one, too.
I especially like the smiley face. Did you see the smiley face?
Yeah.
All right. No. Is there anything we can do?
We do have an appointment at 7:05. I think we're close enough, don't you think? To talk about our request from the fire marshal guarding the private way signage for Clarenon Road. Come on.
Good evening. I'll back you up.
All right. So, we get the letter that you had written. Do you want to give us any background?
Well, what we found, which states in the letter, is that we were called to a medical emergency at this address. Well, the people have, over the years, removed the sign, which is a private way, but it is a listed town road. So, everything's tied to it, 911's tied to it, responses are tied to it as well. So, the selectmen are the governing authority, so we can't just, we had a meeting with police, fire, highway department to see where we go from here to get the address corrected, so we can get to somebody's residence in a timely fashion. So, in those discussions with all those departments, it came back to, all right, well, let's draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen, and that'll be the first step in getting the process, so we can get the name changed. The highway can do it.
Not changed, but posted.
Well, posted properly.
Mm-hmm. You're going to put a sign at the street?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's already named, it just doesn't have a sign?
Correct.
And you need to put up a sign, and you need our permission to put up the sign?
I mean, it's okay for everybody in town, because they know that the road has a nickname.
I have no idea whatever it is, so, no.
But, you know, an outside, for 911, if they have to come in, you know, from Mutual Aid or something, they, it doesn't show it on a map.
Is this out off of Boylston Road?
This is off of River Road West.
Oh, okay.
It's right after 1790 Farm, on the left-hand side. It's a private way, it serves one home.
Okay.
Down in there. It's Clarenon, Clarenon Road, and right now, the people that live there's name is Kimball. So, the sign somehow, over the years, Clarenon Road has disappeared, and they've named it Kimball Way. So, with most of our staff, both police, fire, EMS, nobody's local anymore. I mean, our staff is 25% in-town people, and everybody else is from out of town. We have regional dispatch, so they go by our street listings.
Yep.
However they Google it, or whatever, looking for the address, or go by our maps, that's what they have to go by.
Yeah.
And it's all, everything's tied into 911.
Yeah, well, that just makes sense, all that stuff has to agree.
Yeah.
And it could be North Road coming out of Mutual Aid, it could be ALS coming from somewhere, so, you know, it's, it just needs to be corrected.
All right. So, you need us to make a motion to approve the letter to get this ball rolling?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I'll get you that after you make a copy, correct?
Do you want to make a copy and leave me a copy, or I can give you a copy tomorrow?
I'll grab a copy from you tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
It's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
So, did you all have a chance to read the Veterans Services Officer Job Description Draft? Yeah? Yeah? Okay. Do we want to make a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel, I'm assuming.
Then it goes to personnel. It will go to personnel. We did approve the budget last week, or last meeting.
For that, yes.
Okay.
And Personnel has since approved of the classification for the Veterans Agent. No? I thought that had happened.
Okay.
We'll send you the job description.
Well, it's 7:10, so we're going to have a poll hearing.
Aye.
Come on up.
You look like you're walking to the Committee of Deaf.
Never, never.
So, I'm obligated to read this. The public hearing notice, "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 2nd, at 7:10, at the Berland Town Offices, Building 206, 23 Linden Street, Berland, Mass, to act on the petition of National Grid to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such to sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed with the Selectmen's Office marked Sawyer Hill Estates, located on Sawyer Hill Road, Berland, Mass, in accordance with National Grid Work Request Number 27085784, dated October 11th, 2018." Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Good job.
Thanks. So, where were we?
We were, the last time we were here, we had the wrong easement petition. There was poles missing, and we had three issues that we had to get resolved, which we did. Ms. Bergen, that was here last time, signed off on everything. We have everything squared away. She's happy with, well, not happy, I mean, there's still trees that have to come down, but she's on board with what we have to do.
Okay.
And there's no issues? I know there was some concern about the parents signing and not really understanding what they were signing.
No, and that was exactly why we went back out there, and we made it all copacetic with everybody.
Does the Board have any questions?
Nope, as long as everything is straightened out.
Mm-hmm.
Normally, this is pretty straightforward, I think.
Yep.
Awesome.
So, any questions from the audience? Seeing none.
Tim and Allison are just eager to get their pole, so they can have electricity.
Hey, introduce myself. I'm Tim Rosini. Nice to meet you, everybody.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, nice to meet you.
We're the ones building the house down on Sawyer Hill Road, right now. Don't have electricity yet. Supposed to have it six months ago, but it's nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
Volunteer position's always open.
Yeah. Want 'em or not.
Exactly.
It goes, can't stop.
Not very often. All right.
So, how long will it take you to put the poles off? Or are they up?
We're just waiting on this, and then we can progress forward with the construction, so it's going to be, I'm going to push it. I, it depends on whether, if we have storms, everything gets pushed back because of...
Well, we have Highway Guy here, so he can plow around for you.
I'm sure.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Get your electricity as soon as we can.
Happy new to all.
You, too.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
We've got a few things to sign here now.
Hey, I offered to do a ride-along. If you show me how to ride, do the plow, I can clear it.
Why am I thinking, I was going to say, why am I thinking that there's a liability issue with us actually driving the trucks?
Yeah, just give us a wind plow, let it pave out everywhere.
Give me the what?
The wind plow.
You didn't want that mailbox, did you?
Nope. Every mailbox is down. We don't discriminate. One goes down, they all go down. All right, so this goes to LOEs to be stamped?
Yep.
If they're all done, I'll run them over to the chief's here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, last one.
One, two, three, four.
I don't think I signed, did I sign all four?
Well, you made me look. Yep. Oh. We've got an extra one here, but nobody signed.
Yes.
Just saying. Going to keep you on your toes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She got that one?
Oh, no. I just don't want you to sign it, that's all.
Wow. Feeling the love from the table, just saying.
And you haven't voted that yet.
Does she, does she need to do that one, too?
She doesn't need to notarize it, you all need to vote it though.
Yeah, we will. We will get the electricity to you. So, I believe we are down to the Fire EMS Chief search update. We have received just one or two? One.
So far.
Badge quest.
Yeah. Do you want all three to be contacted, or?
I reached out to them, Mary.
Oh, okay.
When the link went up on the town stuff, I reached out to the three of them and said, "I'm sure it's going to get posted somewhere else, but since I went backwards, if you want to do it, here's the link." And they all said, "Okay, okay, okay."
They all acknowledged that?
Yep.
Okay.
Badge quest did not. I take that back, they did not, the other two did.
But they've already sent something in?
It's been a long day, Lisa, leave me alone.
Well, I was just, I wasn't laughing at you, I was laughing at the fact that Badge Quest hadn't acknowledged and got the stuff.
I know, we got it in.
And the other two acknowledged and didn't.
Correct.
So, it really wasn't.
Yeah.
Well, they have time.
This time.
Well, is there a date by which we meet?
16th.
Is it the 16th?
I think it was like a week after Lisa's.
We added, I added a little bit more because of the holiday.
Okay.
So, which agenda would that be on for us to?
Let me get the date.
Find the, the date by which we could interview?
So, even though the other one didn't come in via the RFP just yet, can we go, still go with it, or do we have to wait?
Do you want information, do you want to ask whether all their information is in, or are you?
I can.
Assuming that it is? Say, we're going to set up interviews shortly, and?
Okay.
Do they want to be included?
All right. And ask them if they have anything new, or except as-is?
It is the 16th, so the next meeting after that would be late.
22nd? Do we have the 21st off?
22nd, Tuesday, after our conference.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to email out to them and see if they have any, if they want to go as-is, or if they have anything to change.
If it's posted as the 16th, I don't think we can do anything else until?
Until then.
That date.
Yeah, I didn't know what the date was, that's why, sort of why I put it on here. But it's nice to get an update, anyway.
I don't anticipate to hear from one. I've reached out to her three times. I really don't want to bother to ask again, but, I don't know.
They didn't turn one in for TA either, so.
Well, I guess they're busy.
Okay.
Well, the she you're talking about doesn't do it for TA, I don't think.
Okay, they didn't do one for TA either, so.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing we need to talk about is a discussion of whether we leave the Fire EMS Chief as strong chief, weak chief. Had you looked into some, the differences?
I did. The only two that I could find, the main differences, where a strong chief, you need to fire for cause, and a hearing where a weak chief is an at-will employee. And a strong chief has total say over hiring and firing, where a weak chief needs to come to the Board and get input. But there was nothing else that I could find that differentiated between the two.
Specifics.
Yeah, those were the two main ones, in all the searching that I looked at.
Okay.
I guess, my feeling here is, this is historically a pretty political position in town. So, I would like to leave it as strong chief, to try to remove at least some of that, not that it's working horribly well, but I think we need to remove as much politics from that position as possible.
To explain how the politics?
Changes in the Board affecting, you know, staffing, or whatever down there, I just, I think you need to sort of remove that a little bit. There's already a lot of back and forth and questioning, and I think that when you, when you throw the Board into that mix, too, it makes it worse rather than better.
I agree to a point. I mean, I would like to have us more involved, just for a third ear. You know how sometimes we just listen to conversations and liaisons, and we say, "Oh, what about, hmm, not very clear." Just as a sounding board, that, but I don't know if that's something that you could negotiate with the new chief, be it strong or weak, he or she, I don't know. But I think if there's a bit of an outside, it goes back to the transparency, it goes back to the communication, the information is done more openly, and not in a soundproof room, where it's, "Oh, well, all right, okay, we didn't have any input, we're done." That's my only concern with the weak chief, in having us being involved. And agreed, and that was what they said, too, that when you have a strong chief, the politics do come out, but at the same time, too, there's also like the backdoor concern of kingdoms, and silos, and promotions, and therefore mine, not yours. So, it's that, it's that fine line that you want to dance on.
I have had a lot of people approach me, asking, "Are you going to change it back to the weak chief?" So, I'm assuming that there's some people in the community that would like to see that happen again.
Is there a possibility to hold any type of public forums and gather input from the town? Legit input, not emotional input?
I think my, my thought is, a lot of that goes back to, to not understanding, when I actually explain the difference between a weak chief and a strong chief, most people go, "Oh, really, that's it?"
Yeah.
They think there's a lot more to it than there actually is. The other thing that I'm going to bring up is, I think that it makes it, it makes us a more appealing place to work for a chief, which is a concern right now, since we're trying to find another chief, if we make them a strong chief. I think somebody is more willing to look at us and go, "Okay, I have authority to do what I need to do from a policy and procedure and hiring standpoint," than if we make them a weak chief, and then they have to go through, you know, yet another step to do the things that they feel they need to do for their department.
Well, I think what we need to do a better job of, because there's a line in there of may report to the Selectmen as needed, I think we need to make that "as needed" a little bit more consistent, you know?
Which, for which one are you talking about?
Well, for the strong chief, it just says, "Can report," you know, "may report to the Selectmen as needed."
Well, it's a, I believe it's a law that we've adopted, correct?
Yes.
That's in strong chief, but have we?
Yes.
We have, yes, and it had to stay in place for at least, was it three years? It wasn't the length of your contract, was it? I thought we did it at town meeting, and it was at least three years, but I can't.
It's not three years?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Okay. What you'd have to, would you have to reverse it at town meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So, this is not something that we would actually do, even.
Correct. No, and that, therefore, the next thing on the agenda was special town meeting, if this was something that the Board wanted to do.
Well, I don't think we can make that decision for the town. I think we need to talk to the town and see.
So, do you want to do that before we, say, take a stab at a special town meeting?
Yeah, because I-
And have the discussion on town floor?
Yeah, because you need to educate. You don't want people to assume. They hear a soundbite and go, "Fact." And no one can argue with them, but if you can get up there and clearly say, "Here's a lovely little spreadsheet. Strong chief, weak chief, questions?" I mean, just put it out there, it's-
We could do like a coffee or something?
Yes.
If you wanted to do that?
Yes.
Have that be the subject? We'd probably have to schedule it.
Yeah.
Soon.
Yep, but I don't want to make a decision for the town without their input.
Hey, also, I have a lot of concern, given that we are in the middle of a haring process.
I know.
Changing this at this juncture, even.
Right.
Correct.
Well, it might be the natural time to do it, if you're going to do it.
You know, because there's multiple reports that you pull up, that several towns, Dayton, I think is the most recent one, and I think Norwood as well, that has moved away from strong, to go back to weak, but then if you look at the population of Massachusetts, they're more strong.
Okay. That was my next question.
Yeah, they're, they're more this way, but sometimes, some towns are sliding back that way.
How about the surrounding towns? Do you know, Paul?
Boylston, I know is strong.
Most of them are.
Most of them are?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to ask if there's any input from the audience, just a minute or two?
Anyone? Bueller? Oh, I see a hand. Mr. Hoffman?
So, I think there's two things to think about. There's a balance of power that comes with a weak chief that does not come with a strong chief. You've got the input of the Select Board, and the input of the chief with a weak chief, and a far more uneven balance of power with a strong chief. Second thing is, I think we've proven that the weak chief works well with the Police Department, as it's had far less controversial experience than the Fire Department. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Maybe the Fire Department's broken, but maybe not the Police Department. So, I think we shouldn't give short shrift to the, to the well, less controversial approach, which seems to be the weak chief and the Police Department. And given Lisa's point of, this is a hiring time, this might be the very reason to make sure that we make the right choice, strong or weak, so that that new chief knows what he or she is coming into, and maybe even has some input from the consultants. I think time is, it's time-sensitive, and the coffee, the input, the peg you're talking about is valuable, but I'm not sure you've got the time, given that you've got to come up with a interim chief as well as a permanent chief. But the takeaway is, I think it's pretty clear that the Police Department's pretty uncontroversial and runs well, and maybe not so much in the Fire Department.
I, I would say that that has nothing to do with the strong chief, weak chief. I think you have a history of the Fire Department being controversial, and a history of the police chief, or the police not.
But that's history.
So, I think part of the reason that you have a strong chief is to try to mitigate that somewhat, so you're not having all of that pressure from outside because of the politics surrounding the Fire Department. I think you make that whole situation way worse if you change that.
Lisa, how do you feel about the balance of power between the Select Board?
I think at the end of the day, the Police Chief still answers to the Board. It just means that we can't just randomly fire him because we don't like him, and we aren't involved in the hiring and firing. Those are the only two differences. He's still got to stay within the budget that we set, which is how you control. If you don't want him spending a certain amount of money, you simply don't put it in the budget.
All right. Is this something we just want to continue to look into?
And we need to make a decision, because we can't dabble. I mean, we're, we're going to look for an interim chief, and then we're going to look for a long-term chief, and maybe the interim chief turns into the long-term chief, I don't know. But today's is for a second. Can we poll together another coffee with the Selectmen the week of the 14th? I mean, it's only, it's two weeks away. And we'll continue figuring out what we need to do for an interim chief, but also gather input from the town.
So, you're suggesting the Monday, the 14th?
No.
Or are you suggesting that week?
No, I'm suggesting that week.
Okay. I'd have to check my calendar, but I don't, I don't have a problem with it. We could have a couple of things on the, on the agenda of, for a coffee.
Right.
Some other things we need to get some feedback from, too.
Yeah, I just don't want the three of us to say, I mean, and I would love to hear from the Fire Department, too, the Fire Department folks, which way they want to go. Who do you want to work for, a strong chief or a weak chief?
Strong chief.
Strong chief?
And I would also point out that this was actually already decided on town meeting floor.
Yeah. Well, that's just it, if we change it, we'd need a two-thirds vote to change it, but-
So, if it took-
I don't think so, just a majority.
Oh, is it?
But either way, it already did pass there.
All right, well, why don't- All right. Well, why don't we do that?
See what we can find for the week of the 14th.
Yeah. I don't mind.
I don't mind.
Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Pick a day.
I have to check.
Do we want to go town hall or do we want to go here?
Coffee?
Well, I suppose if we go here, we need to find out what rooms are available compared to the town hall. We can probably get in a lot easier.
Wednesdays are usually bad. I'm trying to see what-
Wednesdays are bad here?
Wednesdays are usually bad for town government meetings.
Here.
Sure enough.
Right? Mm-hmm.
Tuesday or Thursday is better.
15th or 17th? And we'll use social media again. We'll get it out on Lisa's favorite Facebook and (laugh) and we'll get it out on, and we'll get it out on the town website and-
Message board sign?
Yeah, I mean, I'll even, I'm even okay with like hanging at the dump for like an hour or two and passing out, hey, want to come?
Info.
Yeah.
And we got that blinky sign, don't we?
Yeah, we got the (sigh) the blinky sign. Can you teach me how to program it?
Absolutely not.
There's nothing planned for the 17th at all.
All right.
Friday?
That's a Thursday.
The 17th?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at 2020. No wonder I don't have anything in my calendar.
Oh.
That makes sense.
Not a nice feeling, huh?
How did I get on 2020? Good lord.
So, Mary, could you do me a huge favor and reach out to Leanne and see if the 17th is free before we broadcast it and I change the blinky sign?
Like seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, wow, I knew I had stuff that week.
Ish, yep.
Seven o'clock.
Yep.
All right.
Pending confirmation of a room at the town hall. Okay.
Well, then for the time being, we can skip over the next item on the agenda, which was special town meeting.
Correct.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
May I ask a question? So, I was at the town meeting where we voted for the strong chief, and I'm just wondering, that was very, to me, it seemed like it was very recent. It was within the past two, three years, I think.
15?
December 2015.
So, I'm just curious why we're going down that road again. When we voted at a town meeting, it seemed overwhelming with a strong chief at that time. It just seems like this is a lot of effort to put into something the town has already said they want.
Well, I mean, being totally transparent, I can tell you that when the news came out about Paul resigning, my phone would not stop dinging. And the majority of the texts were, now's the time to talk about a strong chief versus a weak chief. Do something. So-
We're just going to look to see if there's confirmed that that's what people still want.
We may stay, we may not, but I'd rather, I'd rather have a well-informed decision than for someone to say, I asked, you had a perfect opportunity, you did nothing. Okay. You know, just kind of like our coffee. What's up? You know, our coffee chat.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just say one more thing? To me, personally, I think it's an attractive, like, I agree. I think it's an attractive thing for the position, for somebody coming in to be a strong chief. Because that, I just think that's an attractive thing for the position. That's what I think personally. And personal viewpoint.
Thanks.
All right. I believe we have the issuance of a 2019 all alcohol on-premise consumption hotel in keeper.
Motion to approve.
Second of-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While we're talking about the hotel, thank you, Dave, for going down and making sure that the trash was picked up.
I think it was just the weather that day that picked it up.
I mean, there's still a few random long plastic ones. I don't know who wants to don the gear and head towards the river, but it looks a lot better.
The styrofoam in the riverbed is driving me crazy.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Really?
It's still there.
I'll send Fitzy a text.
We know how styrofoam is. It's going to be there fifty years.
Could you make a pass through maybe tomorrow?
Yeah. Send Fitzy a text, tell him to bring his waiters.
Okay.
All right.
That's not my problem. She's cold.
Mary has kindly let us know the outstanding license renewals. Burl and Auto Parts, Burl and Auto Service, Flat Penny, Village Power Equipment, Subway at Solomon Pond. So we were, are anxious to see whether they're renewing it set.
The first one renewed today. Burl and Auto Parts is set.
Okay.
But the other ones are motor vehicle sales and alcohol license renewals.
And so is there no alcohol being served at the Flat Penny?
I can't confirm that. I don't know. They're not-
So at this point, they're not supposed to be-
They're not supposed to be serving. They're not supposed to have an entertainment license. They're not supposed to have food service. They're not supposed to be operating. There's nothing left. After entertainment, food, and booze, there's nothing left to do.
I know. So-
And movies.
And Chief Galvin's aware of this?
Yes, he was copied on all the emails. But I don't, I can't police it, know that if they're operating.
Do we need to take-
Some steps.
Some steps.
Perhaps have Chief Galvin go over and visit?
If you would like to do that.
Pass it on the way home, don't you?
Would you like me to ask him to do that?
No, I think, I think we should.
Hmm?
Say we agreed.
These are a lot of, this is a lot of licenses.
Important ones with that, so yeah. Okay.
I could help him, too.
All right. We are down to the FY '20 budgets. And the first one is the fire and EMS. Fire and EMS. Want to come up?
Is there a new one?
Sir? Good evening, ladies.
So, last time you were here, I believe we went over your budget.
Yes.
And we talked about reducing it.
Yep.
How are we doing on that?
I gave you three different ones. I gave to you the other night, got the-
Budgets?
Yes.
Oh, those were the-
Yes.
Little squares?
Yes.
Which-
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I got some either. I laughed.
Do you want to explain them?
I can, I can explain them. Yep. So the original was at $799,000. That's if we put somebody on, another per diem on, 84 hours a week. So there would be one per diem in the station via vitriol EMT from six at night, six in the morning, which would give us 24 hours coverage, at least one person in. And then we have the groups that are on call, so that the animals will get out the door and the rest of them would meet them at the scene. So that's, that would cover that. And then the 743 was if you chose not to do that, yes, those. So if you chose not to do, have the overnight coverage and you chose, you'd rather not have the salary position for, for the fire marshal's position and keep it hourly, then it would be 743 because I had to add some more money in for overtime. And we had to add some more money in for overtime for the full-time, and we had to add more call wages in. So it, that's the difference between the, it costs about $98,000 a year to do the one 84-hour-a-week per diem slot. So that's why the difference from the 799 to the 743 isn't, isn't the full $98,000, because we had to put some more in to cover some overtime and more in to cover call wages. And then the 737 is reducing the overtime and making the marshal's position a salary position, as we proposed.
So, but your salary is in here as is, so that would need to be reduced.
Yes, it is. Yes, to whatever. I, I made, I have another budget that I've got on the computer ready to go, but I made it at 130. But I don't know what your number is going to be, so.
Just a question for the personnel. Did you guys happen to look at the fire marshal salaries and do a comp or look at how that worked at all?
As far as what?
The, the fire marshal position?
They can't.
I think neither one of them can look for a com sir.
Well, the two of them cannot. Correct.
But we did that when we first proposed it. We did that. We went around to different departments and saw, you know, what they were getting paid, if they were hourly salary, whatever they were getting paid, and comparable positions. So comparable positions with overtime was 80 or more. So it was, it was in the, anywhere from 60 to 70. It was the hour, 40-hour-a-week rate and then overtime after that. So we, we did that when we first proposed the position, so.
So most of them are 65 plus overtime?
Oh, yeah.
Is that, that's correct. Okay. Because I know that when we were talking about this, part of the reason that we went to that was, in general, it was 65 and then overtime rather than salary.
Yep.
So I don't know whether that's-
Everybody gets a heartache over overtime and overtime costs keep escalating.
I understand.
And, you know, we're going to, we've got big projects coming up and there's going to be more overtime. And again, we, the original, we're still asking for the original amount of money, the $80,000, which is already in the budget, which was the wages and the overtime. This year, we're gone, we've, we've over, expended overtime about $1,600 for the year because we were busier. So I had to take that from another area in the budget to be able to cover it. Next year, it's going to be more. So I'm asking, and that's why I said, if we go with the 743, then we'd need, that includes some additional, another $5,000 worth of overtime for the position. If we go with the 737, that reduces the overtime and it keeps it at $80,000 as a salary.
But I have questions, because, well, I always have questions for you. So when I went back and I looked at various fire marshal reports and they, you know, just looked at the breakdown for permits versus inspections, can you tell me if there are other firefighters who are trained can do a smoke and CO2 inspection and LP tank, which would free up time for the bigger inspections of residential code enforcement, commercial?
The full-time staff and some of the per diem staff are being trained to do that.
But they're not doing it now?
No. They are being trained. Some have it. A couple, a couple of the per diems have been doing it, but the full-time hasn't done it yet. So, but they are being trained to do that. They're also being trained to do commercial inspections. We're trying to get at least one of them up to speed so that in a few years, a couple of years, when the marshal retires, that there'll be somebody maybe to step in and take over that role that's already on staff full-time. So that's what we're trying to work for. Get that, get somebody else with the training, certification, education, and background to do that. But it just takes time.
Inspections are done mainly during the day?
Most of them.
Okay. So if you have more people who can do your permits and some who can do your inspections, which are probably a higher complex skill, wouldn't that reduce, wouldn't that need to reduce the time for the fire marshal to be stuck doing your lower level? And you can give those out, so then there really isn't a need for that much?
Once they're trained, maybe. But again, we've got so many construction projects going on right now. Just the, as you saw with the report from the building commissioner's office, just the inspections that are going to go on at the new apartment complex alone are going to be, again, he's needing part-time help to help to cover, cover those inspections. It's going to be a pretty busy place down there, along with the over 55 development going in, potentially another over 55 development going in, and, and just the singular projects that are going on. So, again, I'm trying to keep the overtime down, keep it flat. Here's the rate, here's the pay rate that was all agreed upon. And that way, we don't have to worry about it. Keep climbing.
Right. But you had also, I mean, so you had talked about that, and you had also talked about the number of meetings that are required. So again, going back over the reports for the past seven months, if I tallied them right, there's only three hours of night meetings. So isn't it more economical to send a firefighter who, you can get two hours of firefighter OT time versus one hour?
No. No.
Why?
Because of continuity, because of the person that, because the marshal goes through and he inspects all the plans, he knows what the, what's on the plans. He's written up the orders for the contractor to follow. And so therefore, he goes to the, to the meetings, the different meetings to say, you know, this is what we need to have. The firefighter's not trained to do that.
Why aren't they?
And they won't be trained. Well, it's going to take time. It takes, it takes a long time to be able to learn how to read plans, understand plans. We've got to send them to school. It's not just an overnight thing.
So here's my hypothetical situation, and I'm knocking that nothing happens. A position of fire marshal walks down, falls down, breaks his leg, unable to work for a month and a half, two months on crutches because they can't get in the building. Who does the inspections?
Can't get in the building because they weren't going to-
Did you like that? Did you like that a little? Did you like that? Kind of like slip that in, it's coming up?
Then I take over, or, or we need to get somebody else in. Because we really, we don't have anybody else trained to do that.
So if you can take over some of the meetings and the inspections, that's not something that you'd be doing now to help?
I do, from time to time.
All right.
Can you explain to me why most communities have 65, around 65, and then overtime rather than having a salary position?
Have the what?
Have the $65,000 approximately a year, then overtime, rather than having-
Because a lot of times, it's not a shift captain or, or deputy chief or something that's assigned that function, and they work weekdays and, and a lot of times, they're just, they're not salaried. And, and again, they get overtime, but again, they may be making over $100,000 a year with overtime in some of the, in some of the communities. And Northborough has a captain that's assigned to do it, and he makes over $100,000 with his overtime. He does a lot of different things, so.
I'm just kind of trying to understand, because like I said, when I, when I researched this last year, you know, it seemed like that was sort of the way that communities surrounding us did it. I'm just trying to understand.
Again, I, I know the headache people have over overtime.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the, when you start to hire full-time people, which now we have two full-time people, and you're going to see overtime creep up over time, overtime, yeah, over a period of time, then people get nervous about paying overtime. So if, if I could-
Well, it's not cost effective at some point.
And give somebody a salary and it's flat, it, it just makes budgeting much easier and the person knows exactly what they can count on and-
I also, I also worry that poor David gets caught either way, because I know that I also had somebody come to me thinking that he was salaried last year and that he was plowing and getting paid for plowing and for being fire marshals. So I'm not sure how to make this a more tenable position for, do you, is he where I'm going with that? You can't, we can't win. He can't win, and I feel very bad about that.
It seems-
Well, you have to take the, you have to take the person out of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Correct.
It's the position. And as I keep saying, it's the position.
Position, either way, it's the position. But David's in the position and he's getting it from all sides.
Again, I just need to know whether-
So how do we fix so that this-
Whether it's going to be hourly and over, with overtime?
His salary right now is approximately 65, correct?
His hourly rate for 40 hours?
Yeah.
Is it 67?
Right, right.
And then with the, with the step increase or the 2% increase or whatever it is?
Yeah.
I think it's 68 or 69, something like that.
Right.
But here's my concern, is that as I was looking around, the fire marshal for Boston is paid $80,663, and the articles were saying that that's 15% higher than most. So if you have the city of Boston, which has a population of almost 700,000 people, and compare it to Berlin, that's a little bit over three, we're only at 4% of their population. So they, you're proposing that we pay the position of fire marshal the same as Boston?
I have no idea what Boston pays. I'd be surprised. I don't know. $80,000 seems a lot, very, very low for Boston.
Average, I believe, was about $50,000.
Firefighters make a lot more than that in Boston.
Well, according to pay scale, the average is 58,375. And that's for people with 10 to 20 years' experience. And that was a 2017. So even if you add on 10% for inflation, you're still low 60s.
Yeah. I would also, I guess, I would want to know, once again, overtime, do we, do we know whether those numbers include overtime or-
Stipends and, that's a lot.
No, salary. It just said salary.
It's just salary.
It just said salary.
It's so hard to make these comparisons because we don't have all of the information. And it may be that they get that number and that's all they get. But it also may be that they get, you know-
Correct.
10 hours of overtime a week and it's way more than that. So I don't know how to use that when, when I feel like I don't have the information.
Does the, Tom?
Tom.
Yes. Do you?
Not Roger, Tom.
I know. Did you have any?
Yeah, because that's what I had asked last week, and I know you have, but-
This was brought to our attention, as far as what, just the fire marshal base pay on 40 hours for some towns, and we got just, just 40 hours of fire inspection.
But you don't know whether this is including any kind of overtime?
It's probably all, there's all, these probably have overtime, based on what I-
Well, you take some towns, and there's, mostly they're bigger towns, of course, but the, the salary's sixty thousands, you know?
That's what I said. Normally, it's, it's around here and then it's overtime.
That's the average. But I, we have to look into a deeper whether there's overtime included in that.
Are you willing to do that?
Sure. I got nothing better to do, huh?
And that's what I had asked, remember I had asked you?
Yeah, but there's a few, that's all they do is inspection. But they're bigger towns, like Beverly, and you know, and stuff like that, Yanover, and, you know?
I just know, I mean, he's right. We're in a position right now where with all the building that we have going on, we sort of resemble. I, I don't know whether that continues.
For a short period of time, I bet it will.
For a short period of time, we resemble.
Well, I, I have another question, but if, if somebody goes through the academy, do they learn any type, type of inspection when they, none?
No.
Okay.
So it's truly back to the department to do the training?
We, we could take classes at the academy. We could send people to the National Fire Academy, State Fire Academy for additional classes, but it's not one of those basic functions a firefighter gets.
Can I, can I maybe suggest that for this year, we try the salary and see whether that works better?
Salary at what, the salary at eighty?
It was eighty, right? Well, if we're already paying sixty-five plus, what do we, what do we pay this year? So we pay eighty-one six this year.
What's that?
We were supposed to go over.
I did. It was the first year. I was told to keep it there. Second year, I didn't have a choice. We, we're busy, you know? So I had to take it out of somewhere else. Can't, you can't not pay somebody when they perk over the forty.
Can we have Tom do some research first?
Sure. I know you're looking forward to this, right? This is probably gonna require phone calls. But people are really nice when you call, so.
No, I understand that. I know you understand that.
And had we established a pay range for a new fire EMS chief?
I thought it was up to one twenty? Or am I like making that up in my head?
I thought it was like ninety to one twenty or something like that. So why don't we budget the one twenty rather than the one fifty-six?
Let me tell you that next door Hudson, they have, they've got an interim now because now they're going back out again. The first round didn't prove what they needed, and they said that was, I think I said it was a hundred or a hundred and ten, but it was under review. And now, when they reposted, it's supposed to, talking to the town coordinator over there, or executive secretary, he said it's probably gonna be in the one twenty, one thirty range to try to get. And then Southborough had the same issue, and they are one twenty to one thirty. And trying to get somebody, they're going back out again.
Yeah.
Additional. So it's, it's, it's the candidate pool is difficult.
But don't we need to go to FinCom? Because last time, FinCom wasn't included, correct, until after the deal was done? So isn't that, is this a discussion for finance to weigh in on it?
Well, by putting in the budget.
We would put it in the budget, and then it goes to FinCom, and they will lower it if they, if they deem that it needs to be lowered.
Appropriate.
All right. So the, the training that I see in the reports on the fire marshal, is that a giving training or a getting training?
That's getting. Well, sometimes.
It's training night.
Oh, training.
Night.
Getting training.
Getting training.
Yes.
And is that an overtime paid?
Yes. Any, anytime it's after forty hours, you have to pay overtime.
What about your?
That's not inspection training, though. That's firefighter training.
So all your firefighters get paid for overtime when they go to training?
Negative.
So why does one position get overtime and one does not?
All the full-time people do get overtime when they go to training. Because you have to.
But your on-call people don't?
Because you're at night, or?
What's that? No, because anything after their normal work schedule.
It's on over your forty hours.
They have, or the forty-two for the two full-timers, they have to be paid overtime.
Okay.
And no, we, we do pay, we do pay the on-call members for mandatory training. We do pay them for mandatory training. But we haven't had the money in the budget to pay them for all of training. So.
So.
They, they volunteer a tremendous amount of time, probably almost as much as they, they get paid for. They, if not more, they volunteer time. So again, when we ask to move them up a pay step, it's not, it's not a tremendous amount of money to them, but it just shows that we are trying to take care of them.
So here's a question that popped into my noggin, where we were talking about training. Are there succession plans that you have for all your folks in the train, in the fire department? So if I'm fire, fireperson pegged today and I wanna be lieutenant pegged tomorrow, or not tomorrow, in a couple of days.
Someday.
Someday, someday I wanna be lieutenant peg. There's.
Yes.
Don't be scared. So there's a whole plan, so I can.
They have, they have the job descriptions and they know what they need to do. They have, we assign mentors to them so that they know who to go to for questions. Yes. They know what kind of training they need to get.
Is that being taken advantage of?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's how we did the, the last two promotional processes. They had a certain criteria and things before they could even be considered. They knew what they had to do, and they have to have certain years of experience before they get promoted.
And then one other question that I had had along the budget was that.
I got one too, so just be patient.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
I'm patient.
Go ahead, I'm on the floor. No, no, go. Go.
Oh, that's okay.
Nope, nope, not gonna.
Um, all right. So my question was, I know that you had given steps and a COLA to all your guys. How do you think that that will go over with the rest of the people who work for the town who are only getting COLA, no step? And, and, you know, we, we're trying to be fair.
Again, as I said to the meeting before, you need to do it to everybody. Cheat everybody the same.
Right.
And, and that way, nobody can complain as long as everybody's being.
And the rules were COLA or a salary adjustment, step, one or the other?
But we need, again, we need to know, as we explained before, that the, the plan gets a cost of living adjustment, and that's for, across the whole plan. But how do you move up a step? How do you get from, how do you get to the top of your pay grade? How many years does it take? Nobody can answer that question.
Well, being a school committee, it didn't necessarily have to mean that you got one every year.
No, but there is, here, there is nothing that says.
No.
What do you do to get to step two, three, four, five, six? And that's why I said.
Wouldn't that be part of your training program to say, if you achieve bo, 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 then you go to step grid?
We could do that, because we were asked to put, two years ago, we were asked to put our folks on to the plan. So everybody was on, so everybody was on the plan. But we weren't directed to do something like that. I could certainly say, you know, if you've got, you know, firefighter one-two, and then you've got fire instructor one certification, then you move up a, we could certainly build it around that. But again, do they get an increase because of time in service?
Get an increase because there's money in the budget. I mean, unfortunately, I would love to give everybody a huge honkin' budget, but.
But then why do you have a ten-step plan?
It, it probably needs reworked, because, and that's one of the things that.
It has, it has several factors. It has longevity, it has training, it has, you know, all of those pieces to.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot of things that can be worked into it to make it, so hey, if you've, you've gone more, you're moving up. Usually, when, with us, somebody that gets fire officer one, fire instructor one, they've got these seven other certifications, and then they sit for promotion, and then they go up a grade, not across the scale, but they go up a grade to lieutenant, to captain, to deputy chief. So that's how we build our promotional process. And so going laterally would take more work. Again, I just.
And we, I mean, we also don't want to get to the point.
You're not the only town that does this. The town of Ashburn did the same thing. If, if they got this whole plan exactly like this one, maybe the numbers were different, but they didn't use it. They didn't, you don't, nobody knew.
This is the first year we haven't, I think for a long time, that we haven't given a step to everyone and a COLA.
There's several people that haven't gotten, ever gotten a step. On the highway department, I believe, there's a couple that haven't even gotten a step.
I think that was probably due to the department head's recommendation or not.
But anyway, yeah, so. But again, we just, I think we all just want rules, rules for how it should work. It would make everybody's life easier if we had that.
I think one of the reasons you may think we're giving you a hard time is because your budget is up so much.
Yep. Oh, I, I expected it.
And, and, you know, is there anything that you can do to bring it down?
And like I said.
Other than having us tell you, this is cut, that's cut?
Again, if, if, if everybody's just getting the COLA, then I would say, then everybody gets the COLA. That's fair.
Mm-hmm.
And so I can look at that and, and make that adjustment, and I can make the adjustment with the one twenty.
Yep.
So if we did the.
We would be, keep you in charge of the services, supplies, and all that. I mean, you know better than we do, those things, if there's anything that could be put off a year, or.
Yeah. Yep.
We'd appreciate it.
So, so we could, we could get it down to right around seven, right around seven hundred.
So that would take about ninety-nine thousand off of your budget, your request.
It would take that, again, that eighty-four hour a week position out, overnight position of per diem, by, by, by leaving the salary in, moving the chief's salary to one twenty, and then doing the, the, just the COLA, then I think we'd be right around seven, seven, seven oh five.
But we also, according to the MRA study, should be moving up the amount of coverage. And that also, I mean, we, we did talk about that being a very positive thing for the town in, in regards to response time. So I don't know that we necessarily wanna throw that piece of it out.
Well, I mean, it doesn't mean it's thrown out. It just may not happen as fast as perhaps originally thought. Doesn't mean it's thrown out.
Maybe you wouldn't. I, I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the budget number is that the finance committee needs to get to this year, so.
They might say three percent. Then we're in trouble.
Part of those salaries also are coming from mitigation. Part of those full-time salaries were coming from mitigation, correct? Do you remember what, I can't even remember what the percentage on that was.
Oh, it's about eight, what, we had figured it's about eighteen percent was going toward fire and police salaries of, of the mitigation. The, well, the, the plan that we did, the rest was, was capital. And that's what Buzz had said, his visionized it eighty-twenty for, for capital and twenty for personnel, so. And, and that personnel number will, will creep up a little bit over time, so it'll probably, it may top out at thirty or forty, once a lot of the capital's taken out, but.
I just wanna make sure, I mean, our end goal is to, to keep people safe and.
Correct.
continue increasing our coverage. So I wanna make sure that we do not lose sight of that piece of it.
So I've got, I've got those. If you want, I could give you numbers for, for both.
Why don't you do that?
Keeping that in, okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll give you numbers for both.
Yeah, I did have one more question, and maybe I read it wrong, and Mr., Mr. Bradley, if you could help me with this, that there was a question on the position of a lieutenant being brought in higher than what was on the grid. Did I get that right?
Correct.
So I don't know if that was an error, because like I went through and I looked at some of your sheets, and I know that there were like that were twenty-five, not twenty-two. So I didn't know if that was another typo, or?
Also the firefighter EMT was right in and out.
Because they came in, because when we set up this plan, these were all call positions, paid-on call positions. So this is, this is for a paid-on call position, so the next level up is for full-time.
Correct, but it's not.
So the full-time firefighter is on this position level, and the full-time lieutenant is on this level.
But why aren't you starting no matter this? This has given this guy a grade up before he even starts.
No, right here, this, this is the full-time firefighter EMT.
Correct.
This is the full-time lieutenant. This is a call firefighter EMT, and this is a call lieutenant.
Okay, so he's full-time?
We pay the full-time at a higher rate, because that's typically what they, we're getting out there, is a higher rate.
Okay.
And that was set, we did, when we first did this plan, it just, when it got, when it got rewritten, it wasn't, the full-time wasn't put in there. But you look at last year's and it said full-time.
Correct. So this is for fiscal twenty, correct, or nineteen?
Twenty, uh, this is where we were for twenty.
Mean.
So for, for fiscal nineteen, I put them for a step increase, but you wanted to keep it at a COLA, just a COLA.
Correct.
So that's what we'll do. I haven't, I just got that directive now.
Okay. That's, because when it was presented to us as what they were hired at, it was much higher than what this was going by.
Was it an error, perhaps?
No. No.
You don't know?
Again, because this is a call firefighter EMT.
Can I hope that the person we have come in to do the HR thing. Much less complicated than it currently is.
This is a full-time lieutenant. This would be a full-time captain, if we had a captain. See, but it's a call captain at this rate.
It's a good place to have the good questions answered.
It's a grade above for each rec, because they're full-time.
Okay, but that's not.
Then call.
That's for nineteen budget, correct?
Nineteen, twenty, all of them, on the same, the same, same line.
Okay.
That makes sense, Tom.
Kind of.
Kind of, sort of, maybe.
I have to do some more.
Yeah, once again, we really need when that contractor comes in, that we're gonna sign the contract for tonight.
Tremendous pressure.
No, 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 I know, it's the pressure. So did you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
One more question.
Wait a minute. She said that three times already.
Yeah, but you should know that by now. At least I get scared at the end of the meeting, and I open up my book and I have fifteen questions to go. So I know your capital plan that you have, and I got ahold of Dave Westerling, and he shared with me the capital plan. But I noticed, but yes, your, your numbers are different than what's in the capital plan. Like, so for your pumper truck?
Yep.
Uh, you had four forty. On his sheet, he had four twenty-five. And then for the four-by-four pickup, you had forty, that had thirty-five, and for your, I wanna call them SCBA, but they're not.
SCBA.
Thank you. You had two seventy-five, and there was three ten in the budget.
Yes.
So.
New, new quotes, new inflation numbers. So that's why the SCBA down and the trucks are up.
So when you buy a truck, and I know I asked you this a couple of weeks ago, are you required to come back with multiple bids to say, I went to ACME and I got a truck here for four forty, and I went over here and I got a truck for four fifty, and I got one over here for eighty-eight?
We look at two procurement options through the state, through Fire Chief Association of Mass, through the Joint Purchasing Authority, Massachusetts. We can pick from that list that have already been vetted through a bid process, and then National Joint Purchasing Association has, we're part of too. We can go through that. So we could go out.
Sorry. Go ahead.
She's shushing me away. No, just like sit there with the paper like this. Go ahead, keep going.
We, we could go up the bid, but that takes time and it's a lot of work, but, because they've already been through this vetting process. So we could say, yes, these, we look at the different trucks, say this one most meets our numbers, and that's where you're able to get those numbers pretty quickly now, because there's a, a book, big book, we say, okay, and these are the options we need on it. That's why it's four fifty instead of four forty.
And the state sets that up to make it easier for all of the departments, and probably do bulk purchase the prices and those sorts of things.
So it's, yeah, it's a better deal.
So you'll go back to the capital plan and update your numbers? You haven't seen it.
They've probably sent those numbers off and they haven't been updated.
Yeah, we'll meet with them. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right. So then, are we passing on approving the budget until we get more numbers and revised?
To send us, we'll look at it next week, if you'd like to come again.
Thank you for your patience. Your budget is really complicated because it's so big.
It is. We just wanna understand.
I want people to understand. I don't want.
And I like to ask questions, you know that.
But you have us, I have one more. You don't have one more?
You better hurry up and get out of the room, because I guarantee you, I will find one in my books somewhere.
I haven't been dismissed yet.
You better go before.
I'm dismissed? Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Run. Was that your home out boys?
All right. So we're moving on to the public buildings and capital items, highway and capital items. That would be you.
After all that fun, are you excited to come out?
I have police in here, did we? Oh, we missed police.
We missed police.
We're gonna call you up anyway, and we'll do police in a second. All right.
Yeah, he's looking, there's no police here.
Yeah, I know, there's no police here.
Somebody with a badge or a gun, so.
No.
Maybe they'll run into one way home.
Hopefully not.
Yeah.
So we've got public buildings, and did you have, you had made a couple of changes?
You sent in a new truck. Did you send in a new truck?
Not in the public buildings.
No, not in the public buildings, but it was.
But I did.
But I did submit-
A capital.
Capital request-
For highway.
Today for public buildings.
I don't see it here, but.
Public buildings? You don't see public buildings?
No, I don't see the capital item, he was-
They're tabbed. There's the hot pink neon tabs hanging on the back.
Oh, there you go, there we go. So for the public buildings, you have the parking lot, and you're gonna work on the drainage, or are you gonna do-
We're gonna replace the drainage should the parking lot get done. There's no sense in not doing it all at once.
So the drainage and then repaving?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was supposed to be on last year's and several years.
Right, so just so you know, this is something I found in, in Key's file, like, I had no idea what was in there. So that's, I know the roof and the parking lot were two major items that need to be done here.
Okay.
So I would suggest you pick one. I don't think there's a priority one over the other.
I think the roof had, didn't, that's on the capital plan. I'm from the Midwest, it's not-
I didn't even-
Yes, you did, you looked up. I said it purposely, and I looked at the both of you.
All right.
So last year, there was something with the roof that, um, it had a warranty that went another year, two.
Okay, so it's nineteen years until it's twenty-year lifespan, so.
Yes, so I think they had pushed it on the capital plan. Do you remember if they pushed it to this year or next year?
I do not know that.
Okay, because they had pushed it, and I think the parking lot actually should be on the capital plan for this year, but I don't remember for sure.
I think it probably is. My suggestion is you take them both to town meeting, as long as these two agree. And see where we go with it, because sometimes you have to vote things down a couple of years in a row before they vote positive. But if these are things that are really needed, then I think we need to move forward with it.
I'll bring the photos I took to the parking lot, because the parking lot is a mess.
Well, isn't the parking lot where two people fell?
Yes.
Well, that and the sidewalk, because of the ice.
Yeah, so you now move them into a public safety hazard.
Right. So. We good with those? And nothing else? Wait a minute, did anything else change here on the, on the actual budget?
No.
Okay, so it was just the additional-
Just the attachment of those capital request items.
Okay, we were good this time with personnel with the, the wages isn't in that one?
No, it's not, the public buildings.
That's in the other one.
The highway, and the wages were approved-
Yes.
For what you've asked for, correct? Okay.
So before we skip by that one, um, what about the door? Selectment article, town offices, Americans with Disabilities Act, and roof issues, does that become, um, part of that?
It could be a special article.
Okay.
Uh, it wouldn't necessarily, it would be maybe our special article, or we could ask Dave to-
Okay, all right. I just didn't know while we were talking about that, if it get, if it got lumped in with that.
No, normally it would be a separate.
Okay.
And we would want to see numbers and that first.
Okay.
So I do have a call into two different companies that installed those type of entryways and at least get some estimates as to what we're looking at.
Okay.
For the door?
Correct.
And have you and Joe actually, I know Joe at one point looked at the roof.
I haven't been up there. I looked at it this afternoon.
Be afraid.
Yeah, I'm not afraid.
Only if the, only if it rains and then freezes, then-
Right.
That's tonight.
So those were the two things that we had a concern about, and if you, is, is, would it be possible for you to get the numbers for that?
For correcting the ice?
The door.
In the door.
Or some idea, uh?
To be honest with you, I haven't seen what is going on with the ice out there, so I don't know how to have to get with Joe and-
Well, one of, one of the things that did improve, at least on that sidewalk, was when fire actually took over putting the salt on, because there was a gap, there used to be somebody here who did it, they were no longer employed, and, and then nobody was salting routinely. It was sort of a, there's salt here, when I feel like it, I'll throw it. So the fire department took that over, and that certainly helped with-
And are they still doing it though?
Well, that's, we need to sort of, yeah.
Even police go out there if the guys are on.
But it needs to be consistent, and I think particularly early, like if somebody's coming in early, it needs to be done right away.
Yeah. So we could either sponsor that article-
Okay.
Or article, it could be two things in one article, right?
What are you doing?
Roof and the door. You could.
Could you? Yeah.
I suppose. Or we have two separate ones.
Wait a minute, I can't hear you? Excuse me, can I hear you? Can you come up to the front?
I think it would be two separate articles. I think you would do two separate articles to decide which one.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Pardon me, two options?
If you could help us out with those numbers, we'd appreciate it, and then we'll put together the article.
So how are we with these budgets?
I think the-
I did add to the highway budget for a capital request for seventy thousand dollars for paving. I guess that's something that keeps dinner, okay, so I didn't know that, so I attached that to the highway budget.
Right, and then there was a-
Truck.
Correct.
Is that the truck?
That's the truck.
Yep, that's the truck.
So the utility truck that you use right now is the green one?
Correct.
With the thing in the back, whatever it's called.
It's a technical term, goes with the blinky sign.
Boomy is much more descriptive than-
It has blinky lights on it.
The, the tool?
Correct, it's utility box.
Sorry.
It's all good.
Okay. All right.
And that's average? That's average price for a new truck.
Yeah, it's a smaller truck than what you have now. The, the problem is when I, the guys go to work, they don't have tools, they have to throw, they take tools out of that truck and throw it in the back of a dump truck to go to the job, which doesn't really make sense.
No.
And you've heard the green truck, green vehicle thing, so we don't have to do that again?
Yeah, well-
And, and as much as you can, I understand that highway's about big trucks, but in as much as you can, and this addresses that to a point.
They go on a job and take the truck, I get a six-wheel dump truck and do my town business, so it's not really practical.
And I did look through the, um, the thing, I'll call it, the estimate for the, uh, truck in it.
It was really detailed, I was impressed.
Yeah.
Well done.
The description was red hot.
That was just what they had on it.
Chuckling back there.
You wanna walk home?
All right, so, um, is there any other? What's that?
It's her car. She's got the keys.
And the snow budget has not, um-
Nothing changed with that.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the three budgets as they have changed?
Motion to approve.
And?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then there was the articles? Do we approve of the articles?
Capital, yes.
Capitalite articles, make a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, it wasn't that bad.
No.
So just try to buy the flat penny on the way home, see if it's open.
What's so hard about doing this?
Wow, that is now on camera forever and ever. You should walk out and be like, bam, you should see the new truck I just got.
Thank you.
And a sidecar.
And today is the second. Dave?
Where they can't let you serve alcohol.
I have one more question for you. This is not related to any of this, but, um, we need to decide if we're gonna give an appointment to Richard Drive. Do you have a suggestion?
He's on the agenda.
Is he on the agenda?
What, an upcoming meeting week? Not tonight.
Is it the seventh?
What are your feelings about whether that needs to be on the agenda or not?
I don't think it needs to go any further than it has.
It looked like you had really gone sort of over and above in that instance.
Well, maybe that's something that-
Uh, that's on the fourteenth at seven-thirty.
So it's two weeks.
Do you, uh, I'm just gonna go by, personally, I would just go with your recommendation.
I'll, I'll have evidence, I'll be prepared.
Okay, all right.
All right.
So we'll see you the fourteenth?
Yep.
If not the four.
Thank you.
All right, you need to sign that. Both of these, this one and the next one.
The one that says sign here. Can I put the date in?
Yep. Um, I don't know what was left to approve on the police budget. Was it everything?
Remember he had come back with a couple, um, a couple of changes.
He just needed to get some more numbers together, I think. I think there were no major controversies with it, he just-
And he went to personnel and discussed, um, the secretary down there, and that was a go, correct? So the budget wouldn't change. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think hadn't been anything controversial, he would have been here.
I'm sure. I thought it was only the, uh, secretary. I did, I think we did approve the articles last, last time?
Everything got held. There weren't any votes taken.
Yeah, until he passed everything in.
Does he have capital?
I thought he did, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think they're routine capital requests, um, like the-
I don't see them here.
I, I didn't see any.
No.
They may have gone to capital planning first.
We saw them last time, but he was trying to, he was going to, um, reissue them or something, because there was some problem, but, all right, police, communications, public buildings, highway, snow and ice, legal. I have not gotten any information from KP Law. Um, I believe I may connect with Brian Mazur tomorrow.
Hold it.
Do you want to hold it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna say-
Just pass over it?
Yeah, well, I, I'm just gonna try, as I said in my email, I think this afternoon, that, you know, not everything is KP Law. It's Weston and Sampson and other things, so, um, I will hopefully get some more information on that tomorrow, because he didn't connect with me today. Uh, where are we?
Electricity.
Fuel, oil, streetlights. And electricity is level funded. Is that a good thing, June?
Right now, it's so hard to tell, because everything is new. The highway barn is gonna be all electric, so I'm not sure on what that's gonna cost us.
We spent, have we, have we been spending the sixty thousand up to? Oh, is he here?
Oh.
But we've got also the elevator now that's open, and I'm not sure on how that's gonna go. We have been receiving the energy credits. We, we don't have a lot of new information on it yet, because it's still fairly new, but as an example, as we received seventeen hundred dollars worth of credits, but we paid out thirteen hundred dollars towards it, so it was a savings of four hundred dollars. So I want to say last year, we had extra money in the account, um, so I'm hoping this year will be better. But again, with the new highway barn, it's all electric right now, so I don't know what it's gonna cost us. So I felt it would be safer if we just level funded it and see what the new highway barn's gonna do and the new elevator's gonna cost us eighteen-seventy, so. Because I don't know what type of expenses they're gonna pick up either. So if they start picking up their own expenses again, then we'll have extra money in the electricity account, but I don't know what that is.
But it could potentially end up over in the highway barn, so yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fuel, oil. It's a little less.
We went down, I, it went down just a little bit, because we did really well last year on spending stuff, because we finally, I think, got all the energy stuff done. But I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure what the eighteen-seventy's gonna do, because we'll be having that open again, so.
Probably why we did really well last year, huh?
Well, it's been, it was around like forty-two thousand, so technically, we could probably go down on it, but I just didn't want to-
Go down a lot?
Short us, yeah, too much, until we know exactly where we stand on it.
So it's request for fifty thousand, it's down seventeen fifty, one thousand seven fifty.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And hopefully the cost of oil will continue to decrease as well. Would be nice.
Yeah.
Right. All right, streetlights, these are level funded, well.
They level funded it, because last year, we actually needed to, um, get a reserve fund transfer for it, we actually paid more than ninety-six, but we have streetlights coming in, and hopefully it's gonna save us money, but I don't know.
Do we know when that's happening?
It's in process. Everything's moving forward, but with the holidays, they're-
Yeah. But it'll be in this-
They're organizing, we're bundled with three different, I think it's three different communities to get them actually installed, so it will just depend on how that plays out. Was that, yes, they ordered the equipment, so we actually have lights on site. It's just getting them put up, and that's, that has to do with how that is organized with those multiple communities.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the ninety-six hundred?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.
Town administrator.
Yep.
It's also a range.
Does that include the admin?
No.
No.
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't give an admin, Mary would share with us. If we decided at some point we needed an admin, that would be fine, but I wouldn't try to do that-
Okay.
Initially, I think that would be a bad idea.
I wasn't intending to. So here is the budget.
What's the range?
There is no range, we have to put it in.
They gave us, uh, comps for that.
I think it was something to one fifty, maybe?
One fifty's kicking around in my head for some reason, but I don't know if that was from, um, the original discussions that we had.
That's what he said when I was there.
Really?
It, yeah, that's, that's typical, um, when you don't have a fire chief that's getting paid, but ours is getting paid. Typically, they are the highest-paid individual in town.
Right, but you have police to consider, and the one fifty would be higher than the police.
Well, I think that's what we need to put in the budget, that one fifty, am I correct?
Yeah, but one fifty's higher than the highest-paid person in town, which is your police chief.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm sure I have it. Do you remember what you would have called the, what you would have titled the email?
It says, uh, MMPA benchmark. And that says TA, or town official. But I believe it began with MMPA. But I believe it began with MMPA.
And along with that, are we gonna have to figure out a spot in that cost for construction, if you're gonna like cut the room in half, or?
Well, not in this budget, but I think that probably after someone comes on board, they might.
Oh, will that be part of the space people?
Yeah, it's part of the space people. Outer space people. All right, so. Are we good with one fifty?
We're good with one fifty, and then, you know, the, the screening firm is gonna help us with that.
Right.
We just need to make sure it's not too low, so that.
The only thing we need to.
We're stuck.
Discern is whether. I don't think there would be any purchases of services, advertising. That should be in this budget, correct? The selectments budget, Mary?
For advertising?
Well, I mean, for, um, you know, after they're on board, that's all in the selectments budget at this point. Supplies, office supplies, uniforms, other supplies. Meetings, dues, travel, I mean, you might.
Need a cellphone for?
You might wanna need, you might wanna put in there, um.
Mileage?
Just an extra couple thousand dollars for other expenses, if there's meetings, dues, and that kind of thing.
Are we gonna pay for a cellphone?
We.
Or, and/or.
Most likely.
And/or laptop.
Yep.
That would come out of the IT budget, so that would come through.
I wonder if that's getting included, because I think we already approved that one.
But that would be under that.
Okay.
The lease contract would be at least, not a buy, if we're going that direction. Which we should, especially with laptops.
Absolutely.
Well, any other suggestions then on the numbers?
Yeah, I think it's really hard to do when.
Yeah, I mean, if you just drop in another thousand for incidentals.
Training.
Yeah.
Mileage, whatever.
Yep. You know, anticipate a lot of mileage, except for other meetings, but.
But they would probably, for like devens, you would have.
Do you know what your, your cellphone? Or, or a cellphone, a year?
Depends what you want.
What's Joe's?
Cellphone?
I don't know, it's brand new.
Brand new, we don't know.
He bought a phone through the town, so I don't know what his cost is. I have my own phone.
Well, a phone is normally like six, seven hundred dollars, and then you have to pay whatever your monthly fee is, so you gotta figure at least a hundred, because you want text and blah, blah, blah.
I think that's a Tom Galvin question, and maybe we wait until next week and get the information from him.
Put this budget off, you mean?
Yeah, I think that's another one. We just need to get, we can get that information from Tom Galvin and get a better number.
Mary, can you send an in, uh, an email to Tom to request?
Laptop.
Information on whether he would put this, like laptops and cellphone, not cellphones, but laptop in the data systems budget for the town administrator? And then we'll just determine, we'll just figure out what.
I think he also would have the cellphone information, I think.
Yeah, he might have the cellphone information too, even though we have to put it in this budget.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Got such good bargains. Tom, Tom might be the one to ask about that, too.
He's a scam.
Uh, business cards, I know that's normal, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't put anything under the, uh, at the bottom, but we probably ought to have put like a thousand dollars or something in other expenses. But the question was the telephone in this budget, I think.
Correct. Yeah, because you're gonna probably need new signage, envelopes, you know, from the town, office of the town administrator, blah, blah, blah.
Could be.
Okay.
All right, we're.
Is that to pass over?
Yes. Uh, cable access.
That one's pretty straightforward.
Yep, it's, um, it's, yep.
I would motion to approve. That's not even our money.
This is only for them to get the money from their revolving account, so it doesn't cost the.
It's not our money.
Taxpayers, so anyway, so do we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one you have to say, Janet, it's wheat.
Say it.
Can you play us a little later?
Of course.
Sure. All righty.
Wheat.
Thank you, Eloise.
You're welcome.
They are level stunned, funded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What am I signing? Something Eloise dropped off.
It's probably to do with the whole thing.
Yeah, campaign finance report. All right, well, Eloise gave it to me, so I'm signing it.
All righty, now personnel.
Dun, dun, dun.
We're leaving, we're leaving the contracted services of five thousand dollars in. And dues two hundred. So.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll do a plug for your, we need a third person as well.
Yes, there you go.
Well, here. We have an opening for the Personnel Committee. Anyone interested, please reach out to the Selectments Office. How is that?
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
All right, council on aging. I think we got the, um. Information on what the increases were.
I mean, there's your big one. It's right, that's your big one right here, right there. Just the part-time wages, you're up seventeen, and then everything else is.
She's trying to cover the, um, drivers, correct?
Yeah, and I think probably there is gonna be, there are gonna be a couple potential things. There's, um, Peggy is not going to be working, and we may need to actually pay somebody for that.
Correct.
Other than work off.
Mm-hmm.
And then, but, once again, the drivers, we don't pay the drivers a.
Right.
Actual competitive wage, so.
Yep.
Okay.
What about their capital item, is that the van? The new bus.
There's some software.
Oh, yeah, the software looks slick, which, wouldn't that be nice?
Fifty-three hundred dollars for software. Reduce, eliminate paper records. It's all for you, Lisa. And increase.
Also, it helps.
Data, statistics, management for B- Berlin seniors.
Justification standpoint.
Correct.
Keeping track of everyone's standpoint, I think it's a smart thing to do, and it will help them provide better service.
Right.
Does she realize that she may have to get up and speak, or have someone get up and speak at town meeting on the articles?
I think she'd be fine with it. She can handle her own.
I think, I just didn't know she realized.
Correct.
She actually, that's, that's one of the nice things about Holly, is she does this for another town, so.
And the software's not actually fifty-three hundred, it's thirty-three twenty.
And then plus the.
Plus two years fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and, oh, an additional scanner, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you'd probably need an iPad or something, so that you can.
Okay. There it is.
Would be nice, too, all the documents and all the waivers, if you could just drop them into someone's account, so.
Right.
You don't have to worry about it.
And then the, uh, new van.
Mm-hmm.
It would be a hybrid, which is partially electric.
Well.
Correct?
Yes. Electric and fuel.
It's both.
Oh, it could be gas and electric, or whatever, you know, one of those.
All righty.
Like my previous.
Okay.
Well, it's needed.
Yep, I mean, we did put in for.
A grant for that, correct?
Well, we put it, we put it on.
The legislator's.
The legislators' list.
Okay.
So that may or may not happen, it's not guaranteed, but.
Right, do we, we wouldn't know when that would happen, do we?
When did it happen last year? We didn't know until after May, after a town meeting.
Really?
You just not spend the money if it came in.
Right. Right, okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the budgets and the articles?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if we got the van, we could get rid of the bus, which is basically a money pit, so.
I have a cough drop.
Thomas just gave himself, thank you.
Are you sick? Oh, my whole house had plague. I was the only one who didn't get sick.
I've been sick for the last.
It's gonna be for the articles.
And sign it. Do you want to second?
She brought all the germs, all her collars.
She did, in fact, she made it through finals week and then, you know, was home two days and.
Toilet didn't flush and the sink just dribbled.
Yeah, turn around, he's at the flat penny, turn him around.
Yeah.
Last time I fixed was don't flush the toilet for a while.
Ew.
Sink up both those?
Oh, no, I wasn't paying attention, I was like grossed out by the toilet, sorry. We are nothing if we aren't real time, just saying. Okay, signed.
All right. So, next one, it looks like is CMR PC.
God, motion to approve.
What'd you say, Mary?
Tim felt pretty good about that number.
Okay. So it's an increase of forty-one dollars.
I think we can do it.
All right, she made a motion to approve.
I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, treasurer.
And the treasurer collector.
I saw a lot of back and forth on this, but it seemed like he was still asking for less than what personnel recommended, so.
I did send it to him.
Okay.
And I sent it to the accountant as well.
Sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I believe that.
Yeah. And then he did have a slight increase for the part-time wages. Purchased services was down two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Audit, maybe? No.
No, I think he did have something in here, in case he had to have an audit.
Okay.
Which I'm guessing is the additional four thousand in supplies. He did have that in his description of the increases in the budget.
So he went up sixteen thousand?
Yes. And that's the two budgets together now.
Because you have tax collector and treasurer in the same one, so it's not necessarily a huge increase, right? It's just that they're together now.
Right. Now, is sixty-seven thousand, I'm assuming, that's the top that we will go with if we advertise, correct? That's what we will.
Mm-hmm.
Go with, okay, just double checking.
Yeah, because that's what he said, that that's his guesstimate for a higher salary for the combined positions.
Right, and that was their recommendation, too.
Yep. And the five thousand is in there for the audits, under twenty hours to avoid benefits.
Back, backup information.
It was budgets from years past.
Yep.
I don't think anything's crazy out of line there. I would motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, there was a ton of data that he gave on everything.
Tax title.
Up eight thousand.
Yep. And I think he's the only one who would understand, or be able to explain the additional.
It would be very helpful if he was here for his budget.
Yeah, because he was saying.
He thought, he asked if I thought he was needed, and I said they didn't specify, so.
Right, well, he says here.
Okay.
"We have a higher than normal, usually five to nine amount of tax title accounts for unpaid real estate taxes for two thousand eighteen. This is mostly because of five invoices." No, I'm not gonna mention these names.
No. There's something about the pond on the Lower Pleasant Street.
I know there's an issue with the Tullman greenhouses.
That's the name of the dam back there, I never knew that.
Where?
Bonazzoli?
Yeah.
Suasco.
No.
Bonazzoli?
Bonazzoli.
Bonazzoli.
Oh, sorry.
So that's right across from Garrett's old house.
Down front.
That, in there?
People who've lived there forever.
They probably know where that street is.
You don't know where Walnut Street is?
No, the, the one.
Oh, Bonazzoli.
Okay.
Oh, Clarinon.
Yeah, none of us knew where it was.
So they went across from Garrett's old house.
Did not know.
That's what Claire was talking about.
Oh, okay.
And they all say roof, too.
Motion to approve the tax title.
Oh, here's the information.
Yeah, something like that.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second, sorry, I'm trying to figure out where it was.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, get an interest.
Up twenty-three. Oh, no, up a whole lot more.
Because of the barn. Motion to approve. We don't have any choices on this one.
Seconded.
And the, and the ladder truck, I would assume, too. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, three years on the truck. God love Dennis. What a chance, what a chance.
Unemployment.
Motion to approve.
He's gonna stick with the twenty thousand.
Yep, it's flat.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and the health insurance, thirty-two B.
Motion to approve.
All right, anyway, motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Over on this, do we have anything on the consultant, or talking to the school about potentially latching onto them for health insurance? Do we have anything back on that?
They don't want anything to do with us on health insurance.
Have we?
Oh, you mean, you mean having the three together. I don't think anybody has.
Asked.
Has even asked.
Put us in a pool together, is what she's asking.
We were, last time Dennis was in, we had said, can you please check on this, and can you please check on consultants, and we have nothing on that.
And so is he checking on it?
I thought so, yeah.
So, we should, I can touch base with them if you'd like?
Okay, if not, if he doesn't have time, I'm happy to sort of follow up on that, too.
If I don't have time?
But if, if he doesn't have time to do that, I will be happy to touch base with Bob Conry and maybe follow up on consultants.
Because they were supposed to come back, correct?
Yeah.
Do a presentation to us.
Yeah, well, I think there was some talk of brokerage, but I think we had asked about consultants, and I think, I know that I asked if we could please talk to the school about potentially fooling with them, because we're such a small pool now.
Right, because the consultant quote that he had, he thought was a little bit outrageous.
Yeah, but we still, I mean.
You need to, we need to do due diligence and look.
Do it.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, I will ask, unless you'd like to ask, and then if he's too busy, then.
Okay.
Then, if you wanna do that on your own, that's fine. Uh, Medicare.
Motion to approve.
It's down thirty-two. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just loving writing my name over and over again.
Gonna get you a stamp.
Hope we get cultural council.
Level funded?
Which is a level funded.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was quick.
Aye? It's flat, don't give a chance to, to, to change your mind, flat, go.
And the town report is up a thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, that has been notoriously underfunded.
Yes, it has.
Okay, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the Eloise document, okay.
Okey-dokey. So, the reason I put part-time human resources position in discussion on here was because Dennis had sent out an email asking about anybody having more hires as far as the health insurance. It's not really something that we need to decide on tonight. I know it's something that a lot of people would like to see happen in the near future. The other thing probably would be facilities, if we were gonna do a separate facilities position, I mean, that those, both could probably be even part-time, not necessarily full-time. So I guess it really wouldn't affect the health insurance that he needs to budget for for this year just yet.
My, just my gut feeling on the HR, I think that it's something that is gonna probably have to happen, but I would think that we would wanna get the TA and see what they're going to, get the consultant in, then get the TA and see which HR functions that they will take over and then talk about hiring somebody. And I'd also, I thought I had forwarded it before, but it was in draft form. J. Teach had sent a possibility over for that, just to sort of keep in the back of our mind.
Someone to consult if we need to.
Yeah, but I think there are steps to go through and I don't think that we're ready. I think we need to go through the steps before we go to town meeting and say, hey, we wanna add another position in that area.
And there still is five thousand dollars, I believe, in the personnel budget for HR.
I should send that, I'll send that to you, to the consultant information that he...
We have to use it, we could use some of it to take a look at, you know, at that process and once the TA comes on board and looking at that.
Okay.
And then facilities, I mean, obviously, I think we need to do something about facilities sooner rather than later.
Well, and I actually have at the end here that I was going to put a preliminary discussion of facilities and possible consolidation of different departments on the January seventh agenda. I wonder if I should change that to the fourteenth though, because I feel bad Dave comes in like every Monday night.
If you can combine, if you can combine things for him, I'm sure he'd appreciate it.
We have the Richard Stride people coming on the fourteenth.
I know he comes too, 'cause he doesn't wanna get volunteered for anything and he's not even here, so...
So, I mean, do you wanna change that? The discussion to the fourteenth?
That's fine, that's not just him either, that's gotta be multiple people, so it would give them time to schedule also, maybe invite people from cemetery and board health and...
Right.
Give it to as he wait, as he goes by?
Okay. Schedule the town administrator search firm interviews, are we ready to do that?
Well, we need to look at the RFPs and determine whether we want to have them in and then, yeah, I think we should decide whether we want them all in the same night, whether we want to stagger them and do them in a couple nights. But we're supposed to hire somebody by mid-February, so we really need to get moving with it.
In order to give them a chance to give notice if they work?
No, this, this screening firm, we have told them that we will, will hire by mid-February, it was in the RFP.
Okay.
So, we need to look at the RFP and decide whether we wanna have them all three in or whether we just hate one of them or whatever. And then we need to decide whether we're going to have them all in on a particular night that we want to see or whether we're going to have them on different nights to...
So do we, we need to sit down and take a look at the RFPs first?
Yep.
Alright.
So that, can we do that for next Monday, the seventh?
Do you wanna do it in the meeting or do you wanna look at them outside of the meeting?
Well, we'll look at them outside and then just come and chat.
Alright, is that possible? Is there a lot of documentation?
I haven't seen them because they're in closed envelopes.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there's three.
There's probably quite a bit of documentation, yeah. But we can probably decide sort of how, how we wanna proceed once we decide who we wanna interview. Do you wanna do them on the same night? There's only three, so...
Yeah.
Do you wanna do them on the same night?
If, as far as, you know, if we have a meeting night where there's not much on the agenda, that'd be fine, we could do all three. However, maybe we wanna pick a different night.
I'm wondering if we, if we might wanna, yeah, just randomly have one this week, one this week. We also don't know if we can get them all in, their schedule-wise.
Right.
Where are they from, do you know?
I am not sure, once again, that's easier to, once we have the papers.
So when do we get the, when do we get the magical packet?
Is this in here, is it in here?
The prices are sealed up separately from their actual proposals, so none of them are open because you didn't direct me to open them.
Okay.
And they should be probably open with a witness usually to track what's the contents of them.
Okay.
You can do that in the meeting, you can do that early for next week's meeting if you want, to just do that, it's not like it can't be on camera, but it can.
Do you wanna just open them right now so that we can look forward?
Eloise dropped these off, they're just notices, one is, the one behind it is Lucy, near her official resignation, now that we've gone ahead and plopped in Tricia, and the one through the constable.
Okay.
He was moving.
Moving. Alright.
Feel like it's Christmas, we're waiting for it to be over. Dear God.
Yeah, I was thinking, we asked for a lot of stuff, so...
Mary, how's your exercising? All those arm muscles?
Awesome.
But we'll get them on, we'll start getting them.
If you don't mind, I will, I'll open them, keep everything together.
Okay, awesome.
I don't know, just sign it, it's from Eloise. Yee-haw. Okay. I'll say, Gru White Consulting of Lexington.
Pricing is separate.
Would it make sense for you guys to have one each and then thoroughly examine one and then...
We're just, they're not gonna make a determination statement.
We're not gonna make a determination.
They wanted to get through that much paper.
They're not gonna review this now.
No, but whenever the time is.
Maybe we can also leave these big stacks of paper here and come in and look at our leisure.
Well, it'd be easy for me to send it to you electronically.
Oh, that'd work too.
Oh, nice.
And if multiples.
Are they the same one? Oh, look at that.
Boom, chakalaka, boom, I'm not sure what's up and down.
Thank you.
So you had a whole bunch of criteria, what you expected them to, how to answer.
Yeah.
Which is here.
Thank you. But yeah, that's the RFP, I helped write that, so...
I think I have that.
Yeah, you should type it electronically.
I should.
And they went through, it looks like they went through.
And so whether they're responsive or not, you can take this under advisement, you don't have to actually answer it on the spot.
You mean the item on the agenda?
You can keep those, well, just as to whether they're complete, you know, we don't have to, don't have to go there yet.
Right, maybe we'll take some time to come in and just look at the information during the week.
Yeah, but we can keep these.
These are, yeah.
And since you looked finally too, 'cause that one's entered in a disk. In fact, I don't know if the RFP asked for that disk.
Oh, please. Your call is important.
It's like Christmas.
I told you.
That's what she said.
I don't have my beard.
You have your eyebrows, I saw them.
I do have my eyebrows.
You can slap the eyebrows.
The eyebrows are on the book, just saying.
MRI.
Hey, wait until next month, I get two holidays, I get Valentine's Day and President's Day. Oh, we each get a book?
With a thumb drive, so, yeah.
Oh, good. Dear God.
Valentine's Day, when wear your wings?
Oh, I don't know about wings, Mr. Bradley, I'm sure if you polled the people of town, there'd be other items that I would need to support and they would not be wings. That is a little tilted.
Pricing's separate.
Wow, looks we have some reading to do.
Yeah.
What else for?
We can all go hang out at the general store.
The flat pen?
Have coffee and read. Yeah, the flat pen gets closed.
Is everybody down on that? No, keep an eye on us.
Are we supposed to print this down?
Probably.
I could prop these in a drive, maybe, if that's what I can do, so you can all have it electronically.
Yeah, but obviously I do better with a hard copy, so I can scribble.
I think it might be helpful if we approve a committee, if any of them want to review these also, because they'll be working really closely with the screening firm. They may want to look also, so having them in the drive would be helpful.
Yeah, those you can whizz around.
Alrighty.
Do you, um, wanna post those files publicly?
No, they don't do that yet. They wouldn't do that yet.
Okay.
So we talk about the committee, discussion, the makeup of the committee?
Yeah, I kind of threw some together, which probably fits a lot of the people that have applied.
We actually have seven really great and representative candidates.
Yeah.
Frankly, I think they will be a fabulous committee.
Well, you know, I mean, I have a former...
Yeah.
Or, or a present, but I, they can't do it as a present.
They're way too busy to be...
Former finance committee member.
Scott.
Former selectman.
Judy.
A school representative.
Jeff.
Town-appointed committee member.
Tricia, Janet, Greg.
Well, one of them can be community at large.
Janet is no longer on any of our...
And I put a town employee.
Chief Galvin.
Well, or, I mean, we, we, you know, they need to apply and they may...
They've all, all of them, yes.
Chief Galvin applied too? I think so.
We just got this thing in, everybody on there has applied.
Five, swan, thank you.
Okay, I mean...
I'll call you about that.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Do you have my sofa? And we want a seven-member committee and we have seven applications.
Right, so what would be the other definition?
You need seven to make a decent quorum?
No, 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 I'm just saying, a descriptor.
Make it two committee members.
Two town-appointed committee members. My only concern is that I wanna make sure that we're balanced as far as, you know, there's people who've lived here a long time and there's some people who knew. I don't want it to be one where the other, I, we need to have a balance. So, I was gonna say that we should probably hold off on putting the people in the appointments, I was just coming up with the list of...
Did we have a cutoff date for the volunteer forms to be passed in by?
It said, no, it went from January until July, so I think the assumption there is that we were starting this process in January. And I think we have seven good applicants here. And I think we've been putting this off for a really long time.
I know, so do we, do we just, in the interest of making sure, that we just blast it one more time? We're accepting blah, 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 you have until, otherwise, the door be closed. Just in case there's people dragging their feet, oh, I have until.
Then you have all of these people who've gotten their applications in on time...
I know.
And done what they've supposed, they're, they're supposed to do and you're waiting yet longer.
Well, they're gonna have to wait anyway, I mean, there's nothing to do.
But there is, there's talking to, there's getting sworn in, there's talking to the town management study committee, there's looking these over so that they can hopefully make a choice.
Second, why don't we wait till the seventh?
How many members do you want on the committee?
Seven, and we have seven applications, we have Tricia, Janet, Jeff Zangy from the school committee, Scott Hawkins, who was on finance forever, Chief Galvin, Greg Trameling. It's a really diverse group and it meets the requirements really well.
Well... I wanna give it one more week, one message, done, close it by, where's the calendar? Today's the second, close it by next Wednesday, there, easy peasy, done. People apply after the ninth, the door shut. But again, for the stragglers of, oh, I got time, I got time, and I know, and I don't wanna...
If you do it next Wednesday, then we're missing yet another meeting.
Can we make it by noon next Monday, which is the...
Yeah.
Yep.
What is that, the seventh?
Yes.
Noon on Monday, the seventh?
Yep, and if we don't have any after noon oh one, we go with our seven.
Alright.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Could I just borrow you guys for like a minute? Can I just go off the list for a second, give you a film update? Just a quickie.
How many minutes, one?
Really, a minute.
Okay.
I'm meeting with Mass Film's director in Boston on Friday, if anybody wants to join me, they're invited, but it's plugging along, that's all.
Awesome, thank you, Peter.
That's great.
Okay. Under a minute, boom, boom, chakalaka. Okay.
Any, any, anybody wanna join?
Sorry.
I can't on Friday.
No, you're the volunteer, you wanted, you wanted ultimate power and full control. There you go, ask and you shall receive, it's all yours.
Alright, approval of the KP Law's Human Resources estimate for Community Compact, did you all see that in your email?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was it?
I stayed here to the left of the final thing.
Oh, did you have any input? Do you wanna come up to the front, have a chat?
Nah, too tired.
Alright. Don't be bringing up items, Lisa's already clock watching, just saying.
Alright, I don't think we have to sign anything here, just let, could you let Tim know that we approved this?
Yep.
Thanks. Alright, where are we here?
Liaison roles.
Liaison roles. It's nine ten, I'm thinking we put this off and the December fourteenth meeting off.
Here, I can beat Peter Hoffman, so the follow-up, there were two items, one was the lights, 'cause it bothered Mrs. Lipka and so Dave wrote back and said that he put up lockers.
You're on to your next item?
Yeah, well, it's easy, it's easy, speedy, quick, so I already have updates. And for the blinky sign in the center of town, Dave said that he can give a quote to Tom, but also Tom mentioned that they're working on a grant, but it needs to come from the school committee. There you go, done, fourteen, done.
Alright.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Can I ask about the lights, what, what was the, Mrs. Lip, I know Mrs. Lip, I was there.
Yes.
But what was the...
The blinky sign?
No.
The blinky pedestrian one?
Resolution to the lights. Resolution to the lights?
He put up some sort of, there, he used old street, uh, old street signs to try and, like, push the light.
Has he done that already?
Yes.
Maybe I'll make a ride by at night, because I did it this week.
The bad?
It, it really.
Did Mrs. Lipka give it a thumbs up?
I haven't talked to her, I haven't, I haven't reached out to her.
I, I, I didn't know they changed anything.
I didn't think it looked too bad when I went by at night, but that was a week or so ago.
I'll circle around tonight, I'll, I'll take the long road home.
It's like really bright up there. I know we have the same problem at Berlin Memorial.
Exactly.
When it went in, and they came up with a very amicable, so I'm just hoping it will help.
Yeah, just turned off a few lights.
We don't, you're not going to know, I'm not even going to ask that question.
Where the lights get shut off?
No, you can have full cutoff lighting that, where it doesn't spew everywhere. And I don't know whether we do or not.
All right, I'll take a ride by tonight, and I'll take a look at the big, at the lights.
All right, uh, old business, other new business, I should say first, old business. There's been some discussion about advertising the treasure collector, um, position. Internal, external, and I didn't find it really absolutely clear in the personnel bylaws that you have to do one or the other or both.
Well, uh, that's up to you, whether you want us to keep it in-house or go outside.
Legally have to, don't you, not, not personnel, but legally, if you're going to post, do you not have to post?
You have to post.
Something that, yeah, you have to post it, correct.
Yes.
You just wanted to make sure that you still post it, whether it's a day or a week, you're still going to post it.
Right, well, we need to look at the guidelines to see how long we'd post it for, because I know that was a concern from a Berlin person, um, on how long we keep it up or whether we just make the swap internal.
Ten days, right? I think it's ten days.
Well, we, we can't make the swap internal, but we can post internally.
Internally and, yeah.
And externally, correct.
And, and, you know, I have no problem with doing external and internal.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we might need to start thinking about this and getting ready to do this.
Let's put together what we're going to post.
Until you have the time to do this and then do a post, unofficial posting.
Well, when does the position run out?
July.
Whenever.
Oh, May, no.
Sorry, May, election day.
Right.
Treasure Collector.
So there's that period between election day and the end of the fiscal year that's not really relevant, but I mean, you just appoint.
Well, you'd have to do a temporary appointment.
Right. Because I was thinking it was July one, but it's not. So maybe we need to put that on an agenda, huh?
Yep.
Also a job description.
Yes, we need a job description and ad.
Advertisement.
Personnel Committee has already sort of classified it by their suggestion of, uh, the budget.
Position must be advertised at least ten days prior to the closing date for application.
Okay, so in and out. You know, for the fire chief, we never talked about what we were going to do, did we?
We need to, we need to do that, too. We need, we need to get that posted as soon as possible.
Yes, the job description. And I meant to ask Paul if there is a job description. Do you know, Mary, if they have a job description?
I have a job description.
Oh, please.
No, no, I was going to say for the fire marshal.
Yes, oh, please.
I, I mean, you don't have to do it now, but I'm just saying.
I'm going to double check.
From last year.
I believe there is one, yeah.
Yes, you know, I, I do know, we have a fire EMS chief job description.
We have an option because it was a, a seminar you were approved.
Yeah, it was probably last year.
Fire chief? Fire marshal. There you go, both dated, uh, well, your fire marshal was June fourteenth, twenty seventeen, and your chief was August one, twenty sixteen.
There were many iterations of job descriptions that were never approved by anybody.
He gave, he being Paul, gave these to me. So.
It's fine, they're, they're fine, this is what we have, this is what we're working with, so it doesn't matter.
All right. Okay, so then where do we start to post this, or is that a next meeting one? Do we want to review and make sure that this is correct? Well, are we in any, any ability to say it's correct or not? And we need to talk about a committee. I, for one, feel that we need an outside person from town to be on the committee and that we don't have Paul, so it doesn't show a vested interest or any type of favoritism. But that's just me.
Okay, so is this for interim, or is this for the full hire?
Interim.
What, wait, wait a minute now. Are we doing an interim? Why don't we do a search? And see what we come up with?
How are we going to get somebody in here by March first?
That's the problem.
With a screening committee, we barely have a screening committee.
Well, I didn't know whether the calendar, um, I mean, that could happen.
I don't think it can, just in terms of time, because if it's, if it's a chief that is currently.
Seeing as how we have to wait another week or two before we even.
Right, so if you wait another week.
Forget it.
Right, if you wait another week, no.
Taylor's unaware of that.
Yep, so I think that we need to go ahead and look for an interim chief. Whether it's somebody from the inside, or whether it's a retired chief, or whether you pick somebody up and with the understanding that they have the opportunity to become full-time chief, they're welcome to apply, or as of insert date here, we move to a full-time chief and we no longer need their services.
If you do an interim, if you do an interim, you could do an interim for about six months.
Yep, that's fine.
They just actually hired one, and where did they just go, Hudson?
An interim chief?
He just said that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can come up with something, and I can whizz it around, and we can talk about it next week.
And make up a screening committee, what you want to.
Yep. Yep.
Because that, that needs to be really.
That needs to be tight. Yep.
Some screening committee for fire chief.
Janet already applied.
For fire chief?
Yes, she did.
Really? Look at you.
What did you say?
Didn't you, you already applied for both TA and fire, right?
I applied for TA and fire chief.
Boom, chakalaka, laka, boom.
I need to keep my volunteer work going.
Yes, you do. Because in the words of Hayward, if you don't partake, you cannot talk about it.
All right. So you're going to follow up on what needs to be done as far as getting this one moving?
Yes.
And, um.
We need to.
Come up with a screening committee?
Yes.
Criteria, whatever you want to call it?
Yes, and are we still going to plug ahead? Mary, did you ping Leanne for room on the seventeenth?
Yes, and she said that she would check the schedule tomorrow.
Sweet, okay, we'll get that moving, too. All right.
All right. Any other new business, old business? Selectmen liaison updates? I got one.
I just, um, I, I sent an email, but our TA legislation is on the governor's desk.
Yes, I saw that.
Very exciting.
Charlie.
All right. I met.
Is he going to sign it, read it?
Well, I, I certainly hope he's going to sign it.
Okay.
But it is passed through the House and the Senate, and, uh, this is the last step before it is in effect.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's exciting, but, you know. I met with the Superintendent of Schools from Assabette, and the Finance Director and Lynn Ryan. That was shortly before the holiday. And they gave me information on the Assabette Fiscal 2020 Budget. This was a handout for Berlin Assessment Enrollment Trend, and the combined FY20 estimated combined, FY20 Estimated Combined Assessment, which is the operating in the capital, is up 3.66 percent.
Are there more Burlington's going to Assabette, or are we?
That is in here, I'm sure it's in here. And I don't know if you want Mary to copy this and send it to us, or, um, just take it. One of you can take it and take a look at it.
Okay.
Whichever you prefer.
That's the budget. Those kids?
Total, twenty-two. Yep.
Wow. I know that in the past, um, there's been some issues with Assabette actually being able to come to Tohonto and speak to their students, um, which I don't know if that's been resolved or not, but I think when we have a vocational technical school like Assabette that is graduating.
That we are a member of.
And being accepted to Harvard, that, that speaks very highly of the school, and that maybe we should try to, like, get that connection back and working.
I, I think, um, talking to Jeff Zangy would be.
He's from.
I'm not sure whether that is something that Lynn would want to do, or.
Just to kind of reopen that, um, that connection.
Talk to Jeff Zangy.
I know they do a little visit day or something, but it's really been not as, um, open as, as it had been when we were.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's a shame, because that's a great school.
I would think he has a completely different attitude. He comes from a blended district in Tintasqua.
And the thing that really.
I found him very open to most things that I talked to him about, so I think it's worth Lynn or somebody talking to him.
The thing that is worth telling the Superintendent of Schools is that Berlin is a member of Assabette, just as we are a member of the region.
Well, I think it's, I think it's not worth, like, even, I think have the discussion before you make it an issue. I think nobody's had the discussion.
They get this negative connotation, and I, I mean, it's just.
How about you talk to him, Lisa?
It's just a wonderful, a wonderful school.
Any vocational schools are great, and I know it's doing wonders for mine, so.
An overwhelming number of the department heads and, and, um, people who are involved in town government in Berlin have been upset about this for quite a while.
Oh, you were aware.
Maybe it's something, yes.
Okay, I didn't know if I should have spoken or.
No.
I just, I, I wouldn't assume things when you haven't even had a discussion with, with Superintendent Zangy, because like I said, he's been really.
I actually have a meeting, a school council meeting, uh, this week, uh, Monday, with Diane Tussari at Tohonto, because I sit on as a, a school council member for town. I'll, I'll bring that up at the meeting.
And one of the, um, the things that they used to do, Lisa, is that they used to have, say, for example, they'd have a day where they have conferences, so they have a half-day where the kids could take the bus on that half-day to Assabette to visit the school during the day. That's been sort of the goal, uh, is to get them in during the day rather than have them go to an open house, which during the day, they can actually see the kids and how they, they work, um, in their different classes. So, um.
No, let's take care of it.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. Wow.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, Berlin's low. I mean, they're the second lowest.
I think the other piece of it that you have is, we extended out, or they start going to, um, Tohonto earlier now. So a lot of those kids, probably all of their friends are over at Tohonto, and it's harder to get them to change that path because you have fifth, it's fifth grade, right, that they start over there? And before, it used to be later.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, so, you know, you, you could take that step right from one to the other. And I, I think now you, you do also have that situation.
It's actually more of a budget issue, um, because when we have students that go out, that gives more of the budget to Boylston.
Yeah.
When.
It's not, I mean, it's not significant.
Oh.
It can be.
Politically, it's very significant to Boylston.
Unfortunately, the Boylston kids are not considered, they have to, they have to go on a, I don't know how it works, and I hate to use the word school choice.
They're not a member, so they have to.
They're not a member, so those kids that are there have to wait and see if they can.
Get in.
Can get in, and since we're now one region, I almost wonder if that's going to help those Boylston students.
Because when we went, when we were in high school, it was all the Berlin kids went to Assabette, and the Boylston kids went to St. John's or Notre Dame, or Worcester Academy. There was your split.[1703.64]